A to consider proposed ordinance amendments relating to Department of Utilities fee changes, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this kicks off you have a series of five public hearings tonight. I'm run through, as we typically do, just very, very quickly some summary information. We wrapped up last night in Matoca, our series of seven budget town halls, and these are just excerpts from the budget work sessions that you had earlier in the month. So, no new information, but just sort of reframing each one of these. So, I will come up and introduce each public hearing, but we will not have subsequent very brief presentations. Your first presentation, as the clerk mentioned, utility system, about a 4.2, 4.24% increase in proposed utility fees. But I think, you know, most importantly, is we've been out there this year reminding folks that the utility CIP includes funding for the water treatment plant for the fourth water source, which is vital to our continued water diversification efforts. Tax rates, pretty simple story. You have a one cent reduction in the real estate rate. That's proposed to be the fourth consecutive year that we have lowered that rate. This is the overall table. You will notice that four down arrows, those are all linked together. So, when you lower the real estate rate, those other much smaller categories float down with that. Again, no change in the personal property rate. We did lower that 25 cent last year. No other changes are proposed for this particular table. That is your second public hearing. And there we go into the CDBG public hearing for number three. Total program, just a here under $2.4 million. The bulk of these dollars continue to be focused in critical home repair and other housing type programs. Fourth public hearing is your capital improvement program for 26 through FY 30. This chart that we used during the road shows for the last week or so works pretty well. Where are the improvements that are being proposed across your CIP? The three largest categories, number one being transportation, no surprise there with the addition of the CVTA program. As you heard Mr. Huey mention, major maintenance continues to be a significant focus for us to maintain that financial policy and take care of the facilities we already have on the ground. And then our third biggest one, you see appearance for the top right-hand corner referendum projects at $88.6 million. Though we'll note here, referendum approved in November of '22. Everything in the middle block here are projects that we have already issued funding for and are underway in some fashion or form. Because we, you know, got out of the blocks very early on this, took advantage of the rate environment on a few occasions, we have enough projects moving forward. Right now, we thought we would take the year off as one of those measures in this budget to give us some safeguards, give us a little bit of breathing room to be able to digest all the economic uncertainty that you've heard mentioned here a couple of times already tonight. The final box on this chart references the projects that were approved by the voters but are still yet to be funded. There are things going on with those projects very preliminarily, but we do not have the bulk of that funding. We are not including that for consideration in '26. We'll pick that sequence back up next year. And we have plenty of time within our eight-year window to accomplish all of these items. Other CIP items worth of note, community facilities. This is, you know, really the topic that we have talked about, you know, for quite some time. Major maintenance in school grounds or outside of that main building. Main building is a school responsibility, but this picks up, you know, those what are community facilities in the afternoon into the evenings. Again, part of our growing partnership with the school division, but that is a new item. I think will, you know, something we're going to walk into slowly. You know, we're starting with some tennis court rehab in FY '26, and then we have facility condition assessment that's been completed, and we will continue to fold in other aspects of that category into our major maintenance program. You see broader major maintenance program on number two. We touched on that already. And then transportation access, really a heavy focus in terms of our local dollars on, less on congestion, more on sort of safety, particularly in the pedestrian category, roundabouts, and just making sure that we're taking care of those matters. But again, we got almost $188 million in the CIP for transportation needs over the five-year term. And then lastly, your final public hearing tonight on the actual proposed budget, the operating budget for FY '26, where are those budget, or where those dollars proposed to be spent? This is the total budget here, so $2.4 billion is the proposed amount that you are hearing about tonight and has been proposed to you by the county administrator. Again, schools continues to be the largest focus area there. General fund there and sort of the lavender square in the middle, that's where public safety, parks and rec, all of those items live. And then again, this is the consolidated overview, which the public hearing covers all of these functions, including the utility piece up there, which is a combined operating and capital fund. And again, includes a lot of the improvements associated with that fourth water source. And then you see the other much smaller funds, including the debt service fund at just a tick over 4% of the total consolidated budget for FY '26. Specific highlights in here, again, you touched on these. I think the report, you know, mentions a lot of these items as well. Continued focus on tax relief, $5 million for our senior program. There's additional reductions in here for small business taxes, the 89 cents on the, on the real estate side. Continued strategic investments in core services, 7% increase for our first responders. I think that will, it is vitally important to make sure that we can continue to attract and retain those, those vital employees. And then lastly, sort of a more fluid part of this budget, you heard from the superintendent when we did the proposal on the 12th. It's a school budget that we're able to incorporate at the time all of the items that had been identified by the superintendent in collaboration with the school board. You know, there is some, some back and forth, let's say, downtown at the state level. Some of that funding could be drawn into question. We're working very closely with Dr. Murray and his team, Ms. Spillman, Ms. Walker, working to monitor that. Don't have any specific updates for you tonight. We, as you are aware, contacted our delegation to make them, make sure they're in the loop on, on that particular piece. We'll come back and provide updates as they become available through April the 9th. But this is unfortunately a story you've seen before last year, you know, where the state budget deliberations extended beyond our adoption window, which is locked in in order to be able to get those tax bills out. So, we're monitoring this collaboratively with schools. We pulled in the delegation. We will pass along any updates we have. But we, we do feel confident that we can move forward towards adoption even if we don't have those final answers. And then we will come back and amend the budget as we did last year. And, you know, ultimately, it works. But, you know, we, as Mr. Ingalls, an outspoken proponent of, we'd like to have the, the process perhaps in, in reverse order. But we are watching that and a few other state, state items. But in general, before that, the school budget does accomplish all of their strategic initiatives, 3% raise for teachers and operating costs to open the new middle school in Western Hol Street. So, with that, no questions just yet, but we will jump into the first public hearing, which will be utilities.
I did just want to say one thing. I think you said $5 million for elderly disabled and veterans, and that's an additional $5 million, not $5 million total. It would be $24 million total.
Yes, sir. It's a, that's a, an added layer. And again, in terms of timing, you don't have to make those decisions right now. You are just allocating the resources, the eligibility criteria tweaks that you would make. We're not going to affect until January of 2026. So, we're working closely with the commissioner and would really kind of use the summer months perhaps to evaluate those options. That gives us some more time to see what the economy is going to do and then bring back a proposal perhaps through audit and finance. But yes, sir, it's $5 million plus what is there today. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the proposed ordinance amendments relating to the Department of Utilities fee change. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk.
Item B, to consider proposed 2025 tax rates, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, as discussed, this is a public hearing on the, on the tax rates for this upcoming tax year for tax year 2025. The only significant change to that table on an ongoing basis is the real estate rate and then the other three rates that float down with it to 89 cents would be the fourth consecutive year that we have reduced the real estate rate.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the proposed 2025 tax rate. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Fred DeMay. I'm from the Matoka District. Chesterfield residents have long been the highest taxed county residents in central Virginia. We've had the highest county real estate tax rates, the highest county car tax rates, although Palatin County in recent years has matched our rate. And these rates have contributed substantially to the high cost of living here in Chesterfield. Last year, the board supervisors authorized a one cent reduction in the property tax rate from 91 cents to 90 cents. In addition, the board authorized a tax rate cut for the car tax from $3.60 per 100 of assessed value to $3.35 per $100 of assessed value, which has helped many residents with a reduced tax on their vehicles. Both of these were very good decisions, ladies and gentlemen. This year, we see a very similar situation with the average increase in real estate assessments being about 5.1%. The effective tax rate increase will be approximately 4.4 cents. In this scenario, even with the one cent reduction in the real estate tax rate from 90 cents per 100 assessed value to 89 cents per 100 of assessed value, the over 5% increase in real estate assessments will push the real estate taxes higher. Again, this year, Chesterfield taxpayers will see about a 4.4% increase in the rate equivalency, bringing the effective real estate tax rate to 93.4 cents per 100 of assessed value, higher than other surrounding counties. From attending several budget meetings and tax meetings, the proposed budget also includes a 5% tax rebate on the June real estate tax bill, about half of the surplus, resulting in a 2.5% overall rebate for the year or approximately 2 cent reduction in the total real estate tax people will be paying for the year. In addition, the drop in real estate tax rate from 90 cents per 100 of assessed value to 89 cents per 100 of assessed value will further reduce the tax burden by one cent, but will still result in an increase in cost to the taxpayers. Both of these efforts to reduce the taxes in Chesterfield that residents pay are a step in the right direction and should be the basis for further tax rate and rebate reductions going forward, especially in view of the uncertain economic condition ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm John Caslow. I live at Hopkins Road in Chester, and I'm represented by Mr. Holland. My thoughts are with you, sir. You know, I, I read the public, the public releases about the tax rate, and I hear about the historical tax rate we're getting this year, one cent. I got to tell you, I ran my taxes. And be honest with you, I mean, the comparison I use is social security since I'm retired, and it's gone up 2.7% this year. I look at my total tax bill. It's going up much more than that. If I adjusted the tax rate to meet my social security raises, I need a tax rate of between 82 and 83 cents a hundred. And that's just to break even. Okay? Every cent above that, you guys are digging into my pocket. I understand the concept of sacred cows. If you cut the budget here, somebody's going to get mad. If you cut it there, somebody else is going to get mad. I don't have a real big dog in that fight because I don't really use too many county services, but it doesn't mean that I'm not inclined to pitch in for it. Okay? I just want to pay my fair share, which is 82 to 83 cents per hundred. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk.
C, to consider FY 2026 proposed Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Annual Plan, Mr. Harris.
The proposed program totals about $2.4 million, and again, focuses majority of those resources in housing and home repair programs.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the FY 2026 Proposed Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Annual Plan. Is there anyone here would like to speak to this issue? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. I'm Marion Cake. I'm vice president at Project Homes. Project Homes is a local not-for-profit organization focused on the preservation and production of affordable housing, and we're celebrating our 32nd year. Project Homes in Chesterfield County have had a long and productive partnership, operating programs that preserve affordable housing units that exist in the county and also completing development projects for new units in the county. Project Homes operates similar programs in nine other municipalities. And I have to tell you, the staff of the Chesterfield County Department of Community Enhancement stand out in their efficiency and effectiveness and creativity. They are problem solvers and reliable partners, and we consider ourselves fortunate to have the opportunity to work with them again. So, I would like to just reiterate Project Homes' support of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership's proposed budget for FY '26.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing. And Madam Clerk, next.
D, to consider FY 2026 to FY 2030 Proposed Capital Improvement Program, Mr. Harris.
This is a public hearing on your proposed CIP for '26 through '30 with resources focused in three primary areas, major maintenance, transportation, and the '22 referendum.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider FY 2026 to FY 2030 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing. Madam Clerk.
E, to consider FY 2026 Proposed Budget, Mr. Harris.
This public hearing is a consolidated budget, which totals, as proposed, $2.4 billion. This encapsulates the entirety of the school fund, the general fund, operating budget, houses, public safety, as well as a combined utilities fund, which has their CIP and their operating budget.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the FY 2026 Proposed Budget. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fred DeMay. I'm from the Matoka District. Over the past several years, we've seen inflation jump to levels not seen in 40 years. Inflation peaked at a rate of over 9% in June of 2022, but now has dropped to a rate of 2.8% as of February of 2025. The inflation is now moderating, however, and is still doing great damage to people at every socioeconomic level. In Chesterfield, we have seen a pattern of steadily increasing budgets at about one and a half to two times the rate of inflation over the last several years. Now, the proposed total fiscal year 2026 countywide budget, including schools, is estimated to be over $2 billion, an increase of about 4.4% over last year's budget, making this budget similar to years past where we had budgets running at about one and a half times the rate of inflation, somewhat higher than should be considered reasonable. County budgets that are running substantially over the rate of inflation certainly have enough built-in excess taxation to account for fiscal safety cushion. And in reference to last year's budget, that's demonstrated by Chesterfield County's almost $30 million budget surplus for fiscal year 2025. In attending several of the county budget meetings, it is apparent that there are some important needs in Chesterfield, but the county also has a long list of wants. And at this point in time, with inflation still running well above the Federal Reserve's target of 2%, those wants must be weighed against providing much-needed tax relief for Chesterfield citizens. The proposed 5% rebate on the June real estate tax bill is definitely a step in the right direction, but it's only about half of the total surplus and would offset only a portion of the increase from the approximately 5% rise in real estate tax assessments this year. In addition, the drop in the real estate tax rate from 90 cents per 100 of assessed value to 89 cents per $100 of assessed value will further reduce the tax burden, but still is an increase to cost taxpayers. Overall, the fiscal year 2026 budget represents a considered approach to reducing costs at the county level, and that's certainly a move in the right direction. A continuing reduction of spending in the budget must be an integral part of budgets going forward to continue reducing the costs to the citizens of Chesterfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Chairman Ingalls, members of the board. I'm Gustavo Espinoza. Very nice to meet you. I'm a community organizer with the Legal Aid Justice Center, and I work very closely with low-income renters in Chesterfield, especially Spanish speakers in the Bermuda District. I'm also going to offer some of my testimony in Spanish afterwards if time's permitting. And I'm speaking today to the budget advocating for increased investment in affordable housing, in manufactured home repair, and in affordable housing preservation. Because as we know, preserving affordable housing that already exists is cheaper than investing in, in new housing. And as we know, safe, affordable, and stable housing is foundational for the well-being of all residents, as well as the success of the county as a whole. Housing helps better health, education, workforce, retirement, and economic development outcomes. As the chairman knows, residents at a particular manufactured home community named Shady Hill in the Bermuda District are worried about the future of their homes and their community. The county could invest funds to address safety concerns while preventing displacement. And I'd like to take this opportunity to also thank the county for everything they have already done to invest in affordable housing, to preserve affordable housing, and the amazing precedent that has already been set in the Bermuda District as well. And more generally, there is a serious shortage of affordable housing in our entire region. We've called around the manufactured home communities in the area, dozens, and they have little to no homes for sale and little to no lots for rent. And lot rents and apartment rents are continuing to go up. Rents for three- and four-bedroom apartments are $2,000 or $2,600 respectively, which is out of reach for anyone making less than $70,000 a year. Your constituents want to continue living and working and raising their families in Chesterfield, and sadly, we can't always count on federal funds or grants to close the gap on our affordable housing shortage. So, that's why I'm asking the county to please invest in safe, affordable, and stable housing. Thank you for your time. And now I'll offer some comments in Spanish, if that's okay. Hola, presidente Ingalls, miembros de la junta. Soy Gustavo Espinoza, organizador comunitario del Centro de Justicia y Asistencia Legal. Trabajo en colaboración con inquilinos de bajos ingrejos en Chesterfield, especialmente en el distrito de Bermuda. Hoy me refiero al presupuesto abogando por un aumento de fondos para viviendas asequibles, para la reparación de casas prefabricadas, y para la preservación de las casas que ya existen. Porque sabemos que es más barato preservar lo que ya existe en vez de crear vivienda nueva. Y como sabemos, una vivienda segura, asequible, y estable es fundamental para el bienestar de todos los residentes de Chesterfield, así como para el éxito del condado en general. La vivienda ayuda a mejorar la salud, la educación, la fuerza laboral, y los resultados de desarrollo económico. Como sabe el presidente de la junta, los residentes de una comunidad de casas prefabricadas que se llama Shady Hill, que queda en el distrito de Bermuda, están preocupados por el futuro de sus hogares y de su comunidad. El condado podría invertir fondos para abordar los problemas de seguridad y prevenir el desplazamiento. Y también queremos agradecer todo el esfuerzo que ha hecho el condado para invertir en viviendas asequibles.
Mr. Espinoza, your three minutes are up.
Gracias por su tiempo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Folks, my name's Dave Stritzen. I think you all know me. I actually attended three budget meetings this last week. And I was told I didn't have people to work with me on questions I had. I was hoping that I'd come here, give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the budget, but I cannot. I was told the finance team would work with me. I've been exchanging emails for the last week with Joe. Squaddoosh, I get back from anybody. I was told last Friday that Gerard was going to work with me. I said, I'll meet with you in your office. I'll meet at a library. I told the finance team and him I'll take them to a bar. Nothing. So, I can't tell you yes. I can't tell you no. If you think you have enough information to what the heck is going on, go for it. Nancy Reagan said, it's not okay. Just, just say no. Just say no to this stuff. If you think you know what the heck's going on with the budget, vote on it. I know I don't. I really don't want to stand up here tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. I don't think I need to introduce myself again. I really wasn't planning on speaking to the budget tonight, but I'm not going to miss a chance to speak to it. I did look at the proposed budget briefing charts, and I read them. I didn't go to the proposed budget meeting in the Dale district because everyone I've been to, it's really worthless. I'm honest, to be honest with you. I mean, it's a rah-rah session where you get told all the good things you're doing. Meanwhile, you know, nobody wants to talk about how you're taking it in the tax, in the tax situation. Okay? When I talked to you all in December, I brought along a spreadsheet with some calculations and some notes that I had made. I made copies for all of you. I hope you all took them, and I hope you all read them instead of just throwing them in the trash can. You know, when I look at the chart in the proposed budget brief, we talk about 3% impact on taxes going back to how many years? Dozen years? More years? In recent years, we're looking at 3% inflation. You know, we're talking about, we don't know what's going to happen in the economy. I don't know what's going to happen in the economy, but I looked at those charts, too. You know, in an economic world, there are hard numbers. There are soft numbers. Our oil production in the country is up. Production of automobiles is up. Investment in businesses in the country is up. So, I'm looking for a bright and rosy future there. All right? I calculated back in December that in order to have a budget to stay within the current rate of inflation, you would need $1.7 billion. Okay? Now, consistent with my earlier remarks about the 82 to 83% tax rate, okay, that, that's about a reduction of $36 million from what you want now or what's proposed now. I don't think that's unrealistic. I understand the fatted calf. I understand that one man sacred cow. Guys, we can't keep carrying, carrying the county on the backs of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Renee Eldred. For those of you that don't know me, I look at the budget as an ongoing process, which it is. Anybody can, any citizen can ask questions all year long, but they don't. I sat here tonight and watched, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, about 10 people speak. I went to, I forget how many meetings for the budget, at least four, I think, 10, 15 people maybe per meeting. I was looking at the population online for the county. There's at least 292,000 18 and over in this county. And with all the people at all those meetings and the people here tonight, that is 1,000 of 1% of the people that get involved. I look online at Facebook, and all they do is complain about every single thing. But nobody wants to listen to the answers. They don't want to get involved. All they want to do is complain. So, I'm here to say, if you want... So I'm here to say, if you want things changed, I'm talking to the general public, if you want things changed, you've got to do something different. You got to stop complaining and come and get involved. Participate. I don't think there's one of you all up there that has not listened to something I've said. You don't always agree with me, I don't always agree with you. But you can't agree with everybody 100% of the time. If you do, you're talking to yourself. People have got to get involved. Now, there's some of these things in the budget that I'm like, where's the money from my area? And I think next meeting I will be asking for money from my area, so just be prepared. But I'm just, I'm here to say that if you want anything changed, it's not going to be done from the sidelines. You got to step up and you got to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing no more speakers, this public hearing is now closed. This ends the series of public hearings related to the proposed ordinance amendments relating to the Department of Utilities fee changes, proposed tax rates, proposed community development block grant and home partnership annual plan, the proposed capital improvement program, and the proposed FY 2026 budget. I want to thank the public for coming out tonight and participating in this process, for your input through various community meetings that have been held, and other comments that may have come forward, which will help us, this board, as we continue to work on this budget, leading up to adopting the budget planned, that is planned for the evening session on April 9th.